Somebody else come in now?
I'm just here for the line again.
Okay. Can you, oh, that's pretty. Good evening and welcome to the November 26, 2012 Regular Meeting of the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education. I hereby call the meeting to order, and now please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now Shanley McNally will read the school district's mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you Shanley. The first item on our agenda is a board celebration, a very good one. It's a donation from the Waterloo Downtown Rotary Club of coats, and we'd like to recognize them now. Crystal Buzz is coming forward, and also in the audience is Steve Thorpe, who was a longtime former board member here and is also very involved with the Waterloo Downtown Rotary Club. Crystal, I'll turn it over to you to give us some background information.
Thank you, Mike. We are very lucky to receive a number of donations. The Downtown Rotary Club, like you mentioned, is donating 804 coats to children that live in Waterloo. So this is fabulous. Some will go to our schools, and some will also go to some of the Cedar Valley Catholic Schools to help those children. And then I'm gonna let Mr. Thorpe kind of explain how he got started on the project. It's a fabulous project, and if you know Steve and Liz, you'll realize that they have the biggest hearts. So it's not a surprise that they would do something like this. But then afterwards, I want to mention, we had a large donation of hats and gloves right at the same time from a young professionals group that's with the Board of Realtors. And so I have two ladies here representing them as well tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just to tell you a little about this project, it's called Operation Warm, and it's a foundation that exists, was created in Pennsylvania. And it was created by a Rotary Club there. And what happened was, they read in the newspaper that there were a lot of kids that were suffering through the winter without any coats, and in Pennsylvania, not living there. I assume it still gets cold like it does here in Iowa. And anyway, this particular guy who read the article went out and bought as many coats as he could, but it was the end of January and all the sales had happened, so there weren't many left. I think they got 150, but he and the rest of the people in his Rotary Club talked about it and thought that it was something that maybe they could do in the future that would be helpful. So they set up this foundation, and in April this year, they gave away their 1,000,000th coat in 10 years. So anyway, obviously, the word spread, and Liz and I heard about this project about four years ago, and knew that the need here was great, and so we decided that we'd see what we could do to raise some money. And this year has been our best year. We raised about $15,000 this year to buy new coats. So we're able to get brand-new coats for kids. And the one thing you might know, if you don't know anything about the project, and that is that we have like 12 different styles and colors for boys and girls. So it doesn't look like they were all issued, you know, at the Army Store or something like that. So that kind of helps. Now, for Liz and I, we can identify all the different patterns and colors, but for most people, that wouldn't be noticeable. So anyway, we just feel fortunate. This year, we had the community foundation came forward to help us, and Rotary Foundation did also, as well as other individuals here in the school district. And just this week, as we were handing out coats at Cunningham, I would tell you that we received a substantial gift from teachers and staff there to give us seed money to get started again for next year. So anyway, we're glad that we can do it. As I'm sure all of you know, you know, with free and reduced lunch number at under 70%, if you just do that, times the numbers, you know, you've got 5,000 or 6,000 kids that probably are in financial situations where the need is there. And so 800 doesn't begin to do what's needed, but it's a beginning anyway. So.
But it's a fantastic program, and we are so grateful to Waterloo Downtown Rotary Club for all they do for our schools. But Steve and Liz, in particular, spearheaded this. Steve works throughout the year in encouraging donations, but then putting everything together. And I've been, to one of the fittings, to see the children come in and pick out their new coats. I think I saw it at Cunningham.
Yeah, it's exciting.
It's fantastic, yeah. So thank you.
Thank you.
And the two ladies that are behind me, I have Ellie Fokes from Four Seasons, and Robin Schrader with Century 21 LSB Real Estate. And just to let you know, they donated 262 pairs of gloves, 206 hats, 27 scarves, and 24 headbands, which are kind of like the earmuff, ear warmer. So I'll let, I think Ellie's gonna talk about how they got started on their project.
Hi. Thanks for having us. We actually started our Young Professional Network here a few years ago. And one of the goals of our network is to give back to the community, because the community is a big basis of our job. You know, if it wasn't for the community, we wouldn't have jobs, basically. So it's always nice to give back to them. And, you know, we just kind of heard about doing it at Hatman Drive. This is our first annual one. We thought it would be a fun thing to do, get a lot of people involved. I'm pretty sure that all the offices got involved, donated either funds or items for the donation. We had a lot of fun. Like I said, it was our first annual, so we plan on doing it again next year. We're also open to any other ideas that people have about ways that we can give back to the schools or back to the community, because we want to continue to do events throughout the year. So, you know, I guess that's basically kind of what we have going on so far.
Are you a partner in ed with anyone?
Are we a what?
Partner in education, Crystal?
I think they're a part, the Board of Realtors is a partner at large.
Yep, yep. We're just the Board of Realtors, which includes many agents from Cedar Falls, Waterloo, and the surrounding communities. We also had some affiliate members too, so some of the local lenders, the abstract companies, the title companies, the attorneys, they got involved as well.
Please let us know how we can help in the future as well, and hopefully carry it on and get to several years. Also, like the coat drive, it seems to work very well with that.
Yeah, well, we hope next year we bring a lot more in, so.
No, it's great, and just getting it, keeping it up every year is fantastic, because there's certainly the need there, but this really fits it. So thank you, Robin and Ellie. Thank you very much, and please let everybody know at the Board of Realtors and also Young Professionals Network. We appreciate it. We're very grateful. Thanks again.
Steve, could you come up once more? I don't want to put Steve on the spot, but I've never heard him. I'd have lost for words. And I can't, like Mr. Young just said, what you and Liz do for our community is commendable. But would you talk to the board and the public just three minutes about the Nicaragua and how long that's been going on, and just tell us a little bit about that?
Three minutes would be tough.
I know. I know. I'm counting on you.
But I'll tell you quickly, Liz and I, 11 years ago, I was president of the Waterloo Downtown Club, and Liz and I went to an international Rotary meeting in San Antonio. And there was a priest there from Nicaragua and a former Nicaraguan who lives in Texas. And they were there appealing for help. And in 1998, Hurricane Mitch hit the northwest corner of Nicaragua. And we all know what happened, you know, with Sandy recently and Irene before that. And so this had created chaos in Nicaragua. But what had, what happened there was that this hurricane circled for a week and dropped 84 inches of rain. So, I mean, you can imagine even, I mean, with the problems that Sandy created, of course, that was from the ocean, but this is right next to the Pacific. But what, the big thing that happened was that close to Chinondega, Nicaragua, which is the second-largest city in Nicaragua, there was an active volcano. There's 13 active volcanoes in Nicaragua. And there were 10,000 people living around the site of that volcano, which I think for most of us, it'd be hard to imagine that people would choose to build their hut there. But anyway, they did. And the part of the cone of the volcano broke, and it caused mudslides that killed about 5,000 people. And the 5,000 that were left, older people, parents, children, whatever, they were all moved to an area near the garbage dump in Chinondega. And when we, when we heard about this project, there were about 1,000 children living at the garbage dump and spending their days there. And Liz and I shed a lot of tears, but felt that even though we were 800 miles further away from Nicaragua, that the people in Iowa were generous, and we thought that they'd want to help. And so we came back here and talked to people in our club into helping. And that first year, we sent 1,500 boxes, and we call them shoeboxes, but they'd be like the size of a boot box. And so we sent those, not knowing exactly, you know, how this was gonna work out. But then seven of us went to Nicaragua. And we immediately saw the need and began to expand that. And I can tell you this, that this year, we shipped 44 ton from here in Waterloo. And we've shipped 350 ton in the last 11 years from Waterloo, Iowa, with just getting more people to help us. And so, you know, it kind of started with two of us, and now we have about 5,000 people helping us in 12 states. And we've got a women's shelter there that, most of these women, they're all, come there pregnant. Many of them have been raped. Many of them walk 20 to 40 miles before, to come to this shelter, before they have their baby. And so we take a layette bag for each of those women. Three years ago, I was able to make a connection with a group called Kids Against Hunger. And they do the dehydrated food, and they've made a commitment to us, an ongoing commitment now, to provide us 14 to 15 ton of food a year, which is enough so that we can give every kid in school a hot meal. Now, I can tell you, when we go to the dump now, which we always do, because we have new people to go with us, seldom do we see more than 40 or 50 kids there. And we started with one school with 90 kids, and we now have 12 schools with 2,200 kids. So people joining hands can do incredible things. Thanks.
Thank you for doing that. And I think, Steve, you leave tomorrow?
Steve, when does the group leave?
We're leaving tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Okay. Thanks for all your.
Be safe.
Thank you again. All right, and the next item on our agenda is also a board celebration. And this is to recognize a new partner in education. And Crystal Buzz is still here. This is for Lincoln Elementary. We have several people that are coming forward now to recognize that. But we are welcoming KBBG to become a partner in ed with Lincoln. And I know we have some other representatives, particularly from Rivers Edge Church, who's also a partner in ed as well, and I think the CBE Group also. So Crystal, I'll turn it over to you as we welcome KBBG Radio.
Thank you. We are very excited tonight, as KBBG is gonna be joining Lincoln Elementary. But I also want you to know that KBBG is also currently a partner of Cunningham Elementary, and they've been a longtime partner with Cunningham. They signed on with Cunningham on February 13, 1995. And so this, taking on any one school is a huge undertaking, but they just felt very strongly about being involved in a second school. And so I'm really excited for Lincoln, because this is a great gift for them to have an additional partner. And with that, I'm gonna let Stephanie Mulholland, the principal at Lincoln, take over with recognition.
Thank you.
Well, I first would like to say thank you to our current partners. We have several partners, including Rivers Edge Church and the CBE Group. And without them, we could not do things such as our, our Community Thanksgiving Dinner that we had last year, and it was the biggest we've ever had. We served over 700 meals. And that was the most that we've ever done. This is our third year doing that. So we could not have done that without our partners. And we are excited to have KBBG join us. They are, they are a Lincoln family, so it's exciting that they're joining us and working with our kids. And we're hoping that it's a mutual beneficial partnership.
Thank you, Mrs. Mulholland. I accept this on behalf of KBBG. My name is Tina. I'm the organizer for Zoe's Book Club with a Lot of Books. And our plan, what KBBG wants to do is to collaborate along with the teachers and parents and the youth at Lincoln School to have these children develop their reading skills by participating in Zoe's Book Club with a Lot of Books. This is Zoe. She started producing her own show when she was five, so she knows how to run the board. She knows how to be on the air, bring the show on. She started off reading by herself, then she had, then there was a young man who used to come. He was 10. He used to come, so he was a co-host. Then now she has 20 children. They don't all read at the same time. The most that's been in the studio at one time is 13 children, and Zoe handles them very well. You know, you got them saying, "I want to be first. I want to be second. Why can't I be first?" And she just takes control. So, but these kids aspire to want to read better. And I just know that that's, that can only go back to the school, you know, with the reading abilities and their, and their reading level scores being higher. But along with that, they get a, they're introduced to the media. So they know, I quiz them, they know about cue, they know about the mic, they know about dead air, they know about the board, they know all these other jargons that go with media. So they're, it's a learning experience. And I thank you.
And Zoe is acting shy tonight, but we know she's not shy. I mean, I've seen her. She's not shy. Zoe, thank you so much.
Thank you. Zoe, you're kind of a celebrity. We appreciate, I've been hearing about you for a very, very long time in this show that you have, so thank you for doing that.
Zoe, I listen to you every single week, and I enjoy all of the boys and girls reading in your book club.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It must be that this is TV rather than radio, because she's not shy on TV.
No, not at all.
Well, KBBG, thank you very much for joining. We're grateful. And to all the other partners, to the Rivers Edge Church, thank you, and the CBE Group as well. And number, Lincoln has a number of partners in ed, and I think, I'm sure they all do different things, but I think they're all very supportive. So we appreciate what everyone is doing, and you're doing some wonderful things at Lincoln. So thank you all. All right, next on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations. And so at this time, I would, we invite anybody who wishes may come and speak publicly to the board. And I would like to remind each speaker, whether you represent yourself or a group, that you have three minutes to speak during this portion of the meeting. Mrs. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds left, and a red card when your time has expired. At that time, I'll ask that you conclude your remarks immediately. Waterloo is a national leader in character counts, endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. Throughout our meeting, we commit ourselves to these principles. At no time is it appropriate here to criticize the job performance of a specific employee of the district, because personnel matters are confidential and must be handled through proper channels and not in a public forum. So at that time, is there anyone here that would like to address the board? And I just went through and read the card, and we lost out the audience. So I should have, I should have asked beforehand. If anybody does wish to speak, please feel free. Okay? If not, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of the minutes of our last regular board meeting, which was on November 12, personnel appointments and adjustments since our last board meeting, bills due and payable by the district since our last board meeting on the 12th. Then the West High School speech and theater trips to New York City. And then finally, appointment of the labor negotiating team for the district for the upcoming labor negotiations. Are there any items that board members wish to be removed?
F.
F, okay. Yeah, and that's the.
And D.
Okay. F and D. Okay, any others? Then I've got items to be removed. Exhibit D is personnel appointments and adjustments. And then F is the West High School speech and theater trip to New York City. So we'll get to that second. But first, that we approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of item D and F.
Move to approve.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? If none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to exhibit D on page 5. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approved the personnel items as listed on page 6 of our board packet.
And I just wanted to.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. Motion to approve, sue? Okay, Bernice, a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. End discussion.
I just wanted to bring up the, that our district really hires some very coveted people. And I just wanted to thank Bev and her staff for that, that we have individuals that are wanted in lots of other districts. And I just applaud efforts to hire the best people that we can. And I just, I hate to lose Cody Asmus. I know that was a situation that, you know, for his family, he's gotta do the best thing, and it was nothing. And I think he really did an excellent job with the kids at East High and the football players and the students, and the GPAs were raised. And I just, I commend his efforts, so I want to thank him. And the next person I hired will do the same thing. So just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. And today, the Waterloo Downtown Rotary Club also had the awards presentation for football, the Doc Miller Award. Last week was volleyball, this week was football. And Cody Asmus was there and gave a very nice speech, and I think was very grateful. He also mentioned it was, like he said, he was a coach and enjoyed being there, but he was a father first. And obviously, living in two separate places is difficult, so.
But one of the legacies is that it's arguably a more desirable job than it was a few years ago, because it has been turned around, and they've seen some success. So that's, that's just an ongoing legacy, and we appreciate that.
Yes.
Have we started advertising for that position yet?
The AD has not submitted the posting yet, but they'll be getting a committee together and start that lengthy process. But we're going for the best we can, best in the land.
We did, though, contact Lou Holtz. There you go.
All right, we'll, we'll end discussion on that then. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to the West High School trip. And we've got Mr. Penny here and a couple of representatives. If you could come forward, we'll get the motion on the table. This is exhibit F on page 16 of our board packet. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve travel to New York City the week of March 17 through the 23rd of 2013 for speech and theater students from West High.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. And again, this is regarding a speech and theater trip during the week of spring break. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Penny.
Okay, so we started planning this last year, and kind of the idea was put into my head that we would take on this large trip for our students. And what better to expose them to culture and experience, especially in regards to theater arts and musical theater, which is what I teach, than to go to New York and take a bunch of students on a 20-hour bus ride? I'm so excited. So what we've come up with is, we've partnered with Jim Gosnell from Cedar Falls, and he has planned this incredible itinerary for us. Forty-three students are currently signed up to attend, and seven chaperones, three of which are actual employees or staff members, including myself. The interesting part is that four students will be attending from East High. They assisted us with some production at the beginning of the year at Gallagher-Bludorn, and so I extended the offer to them, and they have graciously accepted. And so four students from East will also be attending with West High students as well. So it's this bridging, which is, which is kind of incredible. And it's kind of been my goal this year, as I have taken on the East Theater position, to kind of bridge the gaps between the two high schools in terms of theater arts and in terms of arts in general, fine arts. Included in the itinerary is, we will be seeing three productions on Broadway. And we actually have the opportunity to have a workshop with one of the actors from the production that we see. And they will take us through an improvisation workshop and a musical theater workshop as well. So we will be going there to see the Statue of Liberty and more of the tourist things, but we also will be getting the educational component as well through those, the viewing of the productions, and then also through the workshop that we're attending as well. Another really incredible part is that we will be eating lunch in Central Park one day. And Joel Wagner, a recent West High graduate, is actually teaching at Pace University in New York right now. And so he is bringing some Broadway performers to come eat lunch with us in Central Park, which is something that the students are really excited about as well. So there's that experience, the itinerary. The total cost for this is gonna be about $60,000. We have raised 30 so far, so we have half of the trip paid for. And then we also have additional fundraising opportunities for the students that are coming up. Noodles and Company, we've done.
I always want to say Texas Roadhouse, but Mulholland? What's it called?
Lone Star. It's called Lone Star. There we are. And then we've also have a bowl-a-thon planned for January 5. So if any of you want to get a team together and come out and bowl, I'd be more than supportive of that. I'm a state champion bowler, for any of you who don't know. It's kind of a big deal in the state, but it's fine. So I intend to, what? Algonah High School is where I'm from. So if you want to come out and compete with me and for a good cause, just let me know. I live across the street from Pam, so. And then we will continue our fundraising, and that's our trip. Any questions?
Do you know which shows you're going to?
We are going to The Lion King, we are going to Newsies, and then we'll also be attending Guys and Dolls as a dinner theater, so.
It just sounds wonderful. Yeah, makes me want to go.
Well, just let me know. Yes, there are a couple of open seats, so.
Earplugs?
20 hours there, 20 hours back.
Well, I read the itinerary. It, what sticks out to me, I thank you and everybody else just for taking the initiative for doing this. You don't have to do it, but the fact that you are doing this extra work should be a huge benefit to those 43 kids, so.
I agree.
Yeah, it's, it's a wonderful thing. So thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
It's great. You can include these kids, and I sure appreciate your efforts. Godspell was great.
Thank you.
And it was fairly well attended compared to in the past, I think. So it was probably, what, triple attendance or something like that?
About 800 people attended the show.
So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And Ryan, I just, I just want to say, I can't go into a lot of details, but Ryan's an incredible leader in our school district and respected by a lot of people, including the superintendent. So thanks for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you again. And please keep us posted on the fundraising as well with this trip as you go forward, but thanks for all you're doing.
Absolutely.
Thanks again. Any further discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda then is for information only, and this is regarding the graduation dates for our three high schools, which seems a long ways away, but I guess we're already past Thanksgiving. So Dr. Lindeman, the dates are here listed in our program for Expo, which this year will be held at Central Middle School on Wednesday, the May twenty-second at 6:30 p.m. West High at the McLeod Center on Thursday, May twenty-third at 6:30 p.m. And then finally, East High at the McLeod Center, you and I, on May twenty-fourth. And I guess the only change was on Expo, we're changing that. So it'll be at the auditorium at...
Yeah, and the dates are corresponding to last year. And we had a couple of people review those to make sure that they fit in. Mary Meyer looked at them, Willie looked at them, and I think they're going to work.
Great. It's always my favorite time of the year. It's always so fun to see the students, and it means we're done with school year.
The sound there is, and it has nothing to do with their sound system, it's just, it's a hockey ring. And it's, and yeah, Shanley got cold last year is the main reason we moved. I've got to be honest with you.
I guess the ice is still up. I think I read this in the paper, but I think they might be redoing the sound, too. I don't know.
I think, yeah.
And it might be out of commission, I don't know.
It is, and it's a pretty big venue for a fairly small group. So I think this will be more intimate.
Yeah, they're kind of lost in it last year.
And I was teasing about Shanley Nicole.
Well, May, the last week of May will be here before we know it. So second to the last week of May will be here before we know it. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, if not, the next item on our agenda is Exhibit I on page twenty-two regarding the School Budget Review Committee application from our district. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education authorize the administration to submit the SBRC application form to the School Budget Review Committee requesting 2012, 2013 modified allowable growth funding totaling $831,978 to be funded by 2013 to 2014 cash reserve levies. Can we get that motion on the table?
So moved.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Okay, in discussion. This is all very technical school budget information. But Michael Coughlin, if you could, give us some background information on this.
Sure. This is an annual review that we do with the School Budget Review Committee. And what it really does is it addresses the issue of enrollment cost, because we get money from students from the year before the budget year that we are in. So in 2012, 2013, it's really the budget from the fall of '11. So things can change quite a bit. And if when we get to '12, and even though the budget has already been set, the tax rate and so on, we may have increased enrollment. And we do in this case, if you look at the diagram on twenty-three, we went up eighty-five point four students. So this approval by the board through the SBRC allows the district to get the authority in the year that this increase comes into the district. We don't get the actual cash, but we get the authority, which again is the most important thing. And then we back that up with cash reserve levy when we do our '14 budget. So that's one part of it. If we just have an increase in certified enrollment. The middle part is open enrollment out. If we have more students going out in the current year than if they weren't on the count from the year before. But all of those situations only came up with seventy-two students, and we had an increase of eighty-five. So that cancels each other out. You can't get the authority for both. So whatever which one is higher, we get the additional authority for that. And then the third part is dealing with the ELL or the English Language Learners Program. And it's the whole calculation of how many students that we have that go beyond the four years of normal support for the ELL program. And that's really not known until the fall, until the kids actually come. So that's calculated to say they've been here for four years of services or have gotten services in another district and came here with two left and had that. So a culmination of four years, and we are still serving those kids in our program. So it is point two-two percent waiting. And that's normally what we get for ELL students. And this is another actual 2012, 13 adjustment to our authority. So we have the resources to serve those students. And then both of these amounts, the eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, almost thirty-four, thirty-two thousand, is then included in our cash reserve levy for the '14 budget. So we get the authority, it helps our unspent balance, and then we back it up with cash in the following budget year.
So this doesn't change what's currently been set for a cash reserve levy?
Correct.
It does convert it from cash reserve to spending authority?
Yes.
But you anticipate you will propose this eight hundred and thirty-one thousand as an additional cash reserve levy for next year?
I will propose it, and by your action tonight, according to the strategic plan of going after all the authority that we can, your approval of this is saying you will support it with cash reserve when the taxes are up next April.
But this is not, we're not voting now, we're raising the... Excuse me. It's not affecting the tax rate now. It's really with the authority. The analogy that's used is that you're raising the authority is essentially similar to the credit limit. But I've never liked that analogy, because it's not like a credit card.
The property tax rate is already set for the current year.
We're not borrowing.
Yeah, this won't be until the tax rate is approved for '14 in next April, fifteenth, when you take that action for the following year.
And I think it doesn't really lock us in to approving that, because there's no harm in approving this. You just, if you don't have the cash to spend, even though you have the authority, you still can't spend it, right?
Correct.
Correct, yeah. But it's allowable growth. I think I heard recently that Iowa is the only state in the country that has allowable growth?
This dual system, yeah.
Yeah, where you said a floor and a ceiling?
Yep.
That, okay. It's sometimes, the toughest topic I've ever tried to learn, is school funding in Iowa. Any other questions? Okay, if not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The last item on our agenda is for information only, and this is monthly internal financial information from the district. It's in our board packet in Exhibit J, pages twenty-four through thirty. And with that, Mr. Coughlin, we'll turn it over to you again to go through our monthly financial information.
I'm going to try to keep this short, because you can tell my voice is half gone. So just to review the reports that you normally see, twenty-five and twenty-six are dealing with the actual cash flow in and out of the bank accounts for each month listed separately, and then gives you the year-to-date totals of what we have in the bank at the end of October. It would be in the bank and then also in the holding fund for the QSCB. So we have that, those funds being reserved as well. On twenty-seven is the summary of the revenues by the general areas, property tax, state aid, and then local, state, and federal dollars. Showing we have about twenty-five percent of our revenues in for the year through October, and the expenditures are running at about twenty-one and a half percent, moving at about the rate that is normal for this time of year. Then on twenty-eight is a three-part report that deals with the general fund, again, the expenditures, and it shows by function over on the left-hand side of what is being spent for each of the functions. And then those are all broke down by salaries, benefits, and so on, coming to the same twenty-one and a half percent. The middle table just reports the total budget that we expect to spend in all of those different areas throughout the year. So if you want to do some comparing of where we are in particular programs or particular functions, you can relate the top one, the top spending year-to-date through the budget in the middle portion. And then as a comparison of what we spent as entirely for 2011, '12, that's the table at the bottom. So you can really look at three different viewpoints of where we are at on the 12, 13 budget. On page twenty-nine is a breakdown of the revenue and expenditure activity for the management fund, physical plant and equipment levy, PEPAL, and then the capital projects. A couple of them are showing negative balances. I'm not showing, the PEPAL one is just a little bit to the negative, and that's a bank account that includes the general fund, so it's supported with that. The capital project fund is the one that we have been supporting the overage of the building project at Orange until sales tax money comes in over the long term. And it is saving us the amount of borrowing, again, short-term, and the cost of interest and selling the bonds and so on. So as long as the general fund can keep up with that, we may, as you're looking at the charts on thirty, the top chart over in April, we may get to a point again where we have to do some short-term borrowing like we did in September, October. But we'll just have to see how fast the project at Orange gets done and the bills are turned in. But it will come pretty close. If it does go past the capability of the general fund, it should be just for a short time until property tax comes in again in mid-April. And then the other charts are showing basically what, where we're at on the activity of the management fund, the sales tax fund, and the PEPAL fund. And just since you haven't seen this chart, these charts for too long, instead of doing them all together, I broke them apart, so you'd kind of see the individual activity. And the line across the whole chart is the actual trend line from 2011, '12. So you can see where we're at. So for the general fund, we're sitting at about $10 million for this year. Last year, it was almost $20 million, but about $4 million is being borrowed out to the capital projects fund. And we are a little down from last year, just because of several issues of cash reserve not being as high as it was in past years. And there's several components that go along with that. But we would be pretty close to the level of activity where we were a year ago if we weren't borrowing out the money to the sales tax.
So from an accounting standpoint, you do subtract from the general fund?
We just show it as money borrowed out to another fund. We're not, the chart is what's in the bank.
Okay, but what's in the general fund?
Right, it's not in the balance, the balance is affected by that.
Would include that, it'd just have receivables from the other fund?
Correct.
Okay. And then my other question is on page twenty-seven. The property tax year-to-date totals looks like thirteen point eight million, and the budget was thirty-one. Shouldn't we have received half? Don't we receive property tax in two?
Depends on how it's paid. We get what's turned in. I'd have to look at a year ago and see what that percentage was.
But you don't, but the thirty-one isn't in jeopardy, the budgeted amount isn't in jeopardy?
No, it's not.
Okay.
It's just a timing issue.
Meaning some might trickle in and that was paid in October, November?
Yeah, we don't just get it twice a year, we get some every month.
Oh, okay.
So yeah, some of it does trickle in and...
Presumably, that'll get to fifty percent before the second installment.
Oh, definitely.
All right, any further questions? Any discussion? Mr. Coughlin, thank you very much. And that concludes the action items on our agenda. If there's nothing further, we'll have a superintendent's report with Dr. Norris.
Well, I wanted to use this opportunity to thank you for attending the UEN meetings, board members and the IASB School Board Association meeting a couple of weeks ago in Des Moines. And for those that are not aware, the topics that you addressed in a two-day period were significant. So at one big meeting, the board addressed legislation, legislative initiatives, including some of the ed reform topics, and then spent quite a bit of time discussing funding for Iowa and for the future. You then attended sessions where you talked about student achievement, and even Lincoln Elementary School shared was our success story. The fifteen, sixteen urban districts got together and presented success stories, and you all attended different ones of those, bringing back good ideas that were taking place all over Iowa. We heard a very impressive speaker talk about the infusion of technology. We also talked considerably about the global achievement gap, which is often referred to also as the skills gap. That was, these are very, I guess the point I'm making, this isn't a typical meeting. It was a pretty weighty two days. And you also, many of you, attended sessions on urban education that I thought was refreshing for this conference. And so just wanted to thank all of you for going and spending all the time to sit through all of those sessions. I think we all came back with some good ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Norris. Yeah, it was a very good week. I think a helpful week for everybody. With that, we're now on to information from board members. And I don't remember where we started last time. I'll start with Shanley McNally.
Tomorrow and Wednesday mark the kickoff in our community to the Blue Zones Project. And I know some of us will be participating in some of those things, and our schools will be as well. But I just think it's a great way for our community to embrace this idea. And I urge people to get involved and get moving, so...
Thank you, Shanley. And Sue Flynn?
And I just want to say that in this season of Thanksgiving and thankfulness, encourage everyone to thank a teacher, thank a principal, thank a custodian. And those people are really important, and give them thanks.
Thank you, Sue. And Bernice Richard?
Just to piggyback on what Dr. Norris said, the UEN session, the format, I don't know who came up with that idea, but it was different. And I really enjoyed listening to other districts and what other schools are doing. But that was a great format to use.
Thank you, Bernice. And Andrea Sparks?
Well, I'm just thinking also about, just coming off Thanksgiving and four days of vacation, and looking at, after this week, it's another three weeks, and then we have holidays. So I'm just thinking of the students, and you really have to... So I'm just thinking of the students and you really have to focus on the next four weeks because I'm quite sure there'll be a lot to do in the classrooms, so just keep, keep going, keep moving.
Yes, thank you, Andrea. And Mike Kinsey.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. And Lyle Schmidt.
Um, just one thing, I, I mentioned earlier I went to, I believe, go to Godspell's High, but I went with a group that, uh, a number of people had never been in that building before, and, uh, they were very impressed. Not only, you know, the polished maple floors that are, that are just sparkle, and then the new auditorium, revised auditorium, so they came away with kind of a wow. So I thought that was, that was good.
It's a beautiful building, and that auditorium looks fantastic, yeah. It's very different than West High's auditorium, but they're both different, but great, yeah. Thank you, Lyle. And that, um, should conclude our meeting. Our next board meeting will be in two weeks on Monday, December tenth, at six o'clock P.M. here in the boardroom. And if there's nothing further, entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, in a second. In a second, moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion carried, we're adjourned. Thank you all.